Vice Mayor Chris Bratcher has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Bratcher.
Thank you, Mayor. If everyone would please bow with me for a moment of silence, please. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting, February 11th, 2010. My, my, my. Moving right along. You have before your consent agenda, and there are three items that need to be added under the water and sewer boards recommendations. Let me see if I can find those. I had them well placed. Thank you. That's it. Under the item D, no, not D, under the item B-1B, the water and sewer board is recommended sole source purchase of ultraviolet disinfection parts, single source purchase of a model S-54 drilling and tapping machine, and sole source purchase of user seats for GE Portal software in addition to what you already have. Also, item D, a recommendation from the Assistant City Manager will be moved to the regular agenda under new business.
Mayor, if there are no questions, I move we approve the consent agenda with those items that you had mentioned.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have before you the minutes of the meeting held on December the 17th, 2009. You've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? And if not, is there a motion that we accept those minutes as presented?
See and none, Mayor. I move for approval. Second.
Thank you. Motion second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we will consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning, Sections 2, 5, 7, 13, 19, 24, and 29 pertaining to subdivision regulations and street design specifications.
Mayor, move for passage on second reading.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to amend Chapter 28 Streets and Sidewalks, Sections 28-1, 28-8, 28-11, 28-31, 28-32, 28-33, 28-41, 28-42, 28-45, and 28-46, dealing with subdivision regulations and street design specifications.
Move for passage on second reading. Second.
Motion and second on second reading. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we will consider for passage again on second reading an ordinance to amend Chapter 29, excuse me, subdivisions, maps, and plaids, Sections 29, 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, dealing with subdivision regulations and street design specifications.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by the City Council on January 14th, 2010, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider amending Appendix A zoning Sections 2, 9, and 24 in Charts 1 and 4, dealing with post-mortem establishments. Planning staff is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January 24th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Ely.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and council members. The first public hearing this evening is to consider amending the city's zoning ordinance regarding what the planning staff has termed "post-mortem establishments." These establishments are human cemeteries, pet cemeteries, human crematories, pet crematories, taxidermists, and items such as that. So to lump them into one term, we're using the term "post-mortem establishments." In November of last year, I presented to the Planning Commission a memo which outlined what the city's regulations are regarding post-mortem establishments. That was prompted by a request from a citizen who was interested in opening a pet crematory in the city of Murfreesboro. The way our zoning ordinance is written today, the only uses that are identified in the zoning ordinance are funeral homes, taxidermists, and cemeteries which were restricted to humans. Staff then noticed, and Planning Commission recommended that staff come up with some regulations to include some additional uses in our zoning ordinance, to modernize it, and to be able to clearly define and regulate uses which people have contacted us about and are interested in opening in the city of Murfreesboro. I did do some research with some fellow sister communities in Tennessee. The communities were Chattanooga, Clarksville, Columbia, Franklin, Gallatin, Hendersonville, Johnson City, and Metro Nashville. And I included in your packets a memo that I prepared that outlines how each of these communities regulate their post-mortem establishments. After reviewing the memo, the Planning Commission did recommend that staff draft some amendments to the zoning ordinance. Those amendments are included in your agenda materials, and those are as Planning Commission recommended approval. The amendments to the zoning ordinance will deal specifically with Sections 2 of the zoning ordinance, Section 9, Section 24, Charts 1, and Charts 4 of the zoning ordinance. And I'll briefly just go over what all these amendments will entail. First, the first change to Section 2 is to add eight new definitions to our zoning ordinance. Or the following uses are defined: cemetery, pet cemetery; crematory, pet crematory; funeral home, pet funeral home; morgue, and taxidermy studio. The second change is to add some special use standards in Section 9 of our zoning ordinance for crematories, pet cemeteries, pet crematories, and taxidermy studios. There are already some standards that exist for human cemeteries. The next change is to change Section 24, which would not allow cemeteries, pet cemeteries, crematories, pet crematories, pet funeral homes, and taxidermy studios to be uses permitted in the GDO district, Gateway Design Overlay District. The next change would be to Chart 1, our uses permitted chart, and it would add those uses which we defined in the definition section. Also, we have updated a couple terms. The term which is currently in our zoning ordinance is veterinarian's office. We changed it to veterinarian office. Also, we changed the term from taxidermist to taxidermy studio since it more appropriately defines the use and not the actual person who performs the service. The last change is the change to Chart 4, which is the section that deals with our required off-street parking and queuing spaces. As we, our zoning ordinance currently is, we prescribe a certain number of parking spaces that's required for each use since we're adding some additional uses to the zoning ordinance. It was appropriate to go ahead and put in some parking standards to go along with those uses. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of all these changes unanimously, and all members were present at that meeting. The City Council should conduct a public hearing before considering changing the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance. If you have any questions at any time, myself and Mr. Adelot will be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions for Ms. Ely on this recommendation? If not, we'll open the public hearing at this time and consider amending the zoning ordinance regarding these items on post-mortem establishments. Is anyone here wishing to speak, for or against? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning Sections 2, 9, and 24 in Charts 1 and 4, dealing with post-mortem establishments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by the City Council on January the 14th, 2010, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a request to rezone approximately .52 acres located along Medical Center Parkway from a planned commercial development, PCD District, to Commercial Friends, CF District. Denise O'Connell is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January 24th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, welcome again.
Thank you again. You'll notice tonight that we're not using the map boards, but instead we're using the television screens. I think we've entered the 21st century. And now, as we're doing in Planning Commission, we're putting maps on the TV so that it's easier for the public to view. And also, those maps are included in your agenda packet, so it would be easier for you to read. You can look at that. The rezoning request is for a property that's about half an acre in size, and it's located north of Medical Center Parkway, just west of the Memorial Boulevard-Medical Center Parkway intersection. Property is currently zoned PCD, Planned Commercial District. All the properties that front along the section of Medical Center Parkway are in the Gateway Design Overlay District, GDO 4 Overlay. I've also included in your agenda materials a couple photographs of the site, and those photographs are also available for the public to view on your TV screens. The existing structure used to be a residential structure, but was converted into a commercial structure back in 1998. The properties to the north are zoned RS-10, are a part of developed single-family subdivisions. Just to the east of the property is a beauty salon, which is zoned CH. Next to that is a furniture store, and then some office complexes are on the corner. To the south, the property is zoned HI, which is heavy industrial district. And on those properties, you have a commercial strip center and the new Burger King restaurant. To the west of the property is zoned RS-10, and that's also the four single-family subdivisions. This section of Medical Center Parkway is a five-lane street section with curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. In 1998, the property was rezoned from its RS-10 to PCD zone to allow the Murfreesboro Art and Frame Shop. The current PCD zone was amended in 2007, and the zoning currently only permits paintless dent repair with minor glass and upholstery repair, which again was approved in 2007. Although the zoning entitlement has been in place for this many years, the property has never been opened, and it's never been utilized for that business. Mr. Adelot and I were approached by the applicant, Ms. Denise O'Connell, who was looking at this property and wanting to use it for her purposes. She stated that she is interested in opening what she calls an upscale doggy daycare, which would be similar to something that, I guess, a daycare center that you would take your children to, and it would be an operation that would happen during the day. And with further consultation with staff, we recommended that the applicant actually, rather than amending the PCD zone, since this would be the third time the zone would be amended, request that the property be zoned to CF, Friends Commercial District. The CF zone is not as intensive as the adjacent CH zone, but it would allow this doggy daycare facility. Staff has another level of comfort with this property because it is in the Gateway Design Overlay, and since we've had some experience in the past with that being a success, and we felt that the regulations that currently overlay the property with the CF zone would be appropriate. Of course, that'll be for you to decide after the public hearing. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request to zone it to CF. If you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, staff will be able to answer them, but you should conduct a public hearing before considering rezoning this property.
Any questions for Ms. Ely? It's still going to be in the GDO 4 district. Is that correct?
That will not change.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and we'll hear from anyone who wishes to speak for or against this rezoning request of .52 acres located along Medical Center Parkway. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Medical Center Parkway to Commercial Friends, CF District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on January the 14th, 2010, we'll now conduct a public hearing to consider a request to rezone approximately 1.29 acres located along Last Cassis Pike and Winland Drive from residential multifamily 16 District to local commercials, CL District. Robert D. and Johnny B. Jones are the applicants. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the January 24th, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Ms. Ely, you may continue.
Thank you again. The subject property is a double frontage lot with frontage along Last Cassis Pike and Winland Drive. The property is located, or is currently zoned RM16 multifamily residential district, and that permits various residential uses, such as single-family, two-family, and multifamily uses. The property to the north is zoned CL, Local Commercial District, and adjacent to the property are, to the north, is an office and a landscaping business. Property to the south and to the southeast is zoned RM16, which is for multifamily residential purposes. Property to the northeast is zoned RM12, and to the north is RD. So there's some various zones surrounding this property, mostly consisting of multifamily residential and commercial planned or local commercial zones. The property owners contacted staff, and they were requesting that this property be rezoned to CL. They currently have the Kids Connection Daycare Center, which a photograph was included in your agenda materials, is also on the television. And they wanted to have a commercial use on the property, but they wanted to restrict that to one of our commercial uses that are less intense, don't allow as many uses that you would see in the commercial highway zone. So they came up with the CL zone. The subject property has access to both Last Cassis Pike and Winland Drive. Last Cassis Pike is a two-lane ditch section street, and it does not have sidewalks, and Winland Drive is a two-lane substandard street. The CL zone would continue to allow the current use, which is a daycare center, but it would also allow a variety of residential and commercial uses. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning request unanimously. If the City Council has any questions regarding this application, staff will be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but you should consider, or have a public hearing to consider rezoning this property from RM16 to CL, Local Commercial District.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Ely regarding this rezoning request?
Ms. Ely, the likelihood of RM16 being on this property would be very remote, wouldn't it?
That's right. The property is currently developed, and you can see that the structure that's on there doesn't look like it would be very conducive to converting it into a multifamily apartment complex or a single-family house. So the structure, I think, was built to commercial standards, and it would be likely used commercially in the future.
Other questions? If not, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll hear from anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning request. Please step to the podium and give us your name and address. Is anyone here wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Last Cassis Pike and Winland Drive to local commercial CL District.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to reschedule a public hearing, or I'm sorry, to schedule a public hearing to consider rezoning an area along Cresslin Avenue and Eaton Drive from RM16 to PRD. And you have a copy furnished in front of you. Mr. Adelot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the council. During this regular meeting on February 3rd of 2010, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended approval of the matter that you just mentioned. We need to schedule for a public hearing.
Ms. McGannon.
Mayor, I would suggest March 25th.
I'm advising the council, Mayor, I move that we set the public hearing for March 25th.
Second. All right. Is, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Adelot. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager with regards to the City of Murfreesboro Fair Housing Program. Mr. Crumley, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. We're asking that you set a special meeting on March 4th at 5:30 to hear the report of Mr. Lawber. Dan is hired by Community Development Program to conduct and implement the Fair Housing Study. He has also developed recommendations for your consideration that he believes are improvements to our 17-year-old Fair Housing Ordinance. If that time is inconvenient, please let us know, and we'll get with Mr. Lawber and try to reschedule. But it appeared that we would have council meeting that night, and so March 4th, 5:30 is our recommendation.
Is there a motion that we have this Fair Housing Study contractor come on March 4th?
Move for the recommendation.
Second. All right. A motion, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll hear from the Assistant City Attorney with regards to abandonment of the former right-of-way for Dejarnet Lane and a sale of excess purchased property to the Northwoods Homeowners Association. Is the Assistant here?
He is not.
Well, why don't we hear from the City Attorney then? Ms. McGannon.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. As a result of the city's expansion and reworking of Dejarnet Lane, there were some pieces of property, and what we bring to you tonight is the recommendation of staff and the Gateway, sorry, Planning Commission about, and the Gateway Commission about how they should be disposed of. We have land that was acquired, and the proposal is to sell it at the prorata rate for which the city paid, and right-of-way, which is no longer needed. The Northwoods Homeowners Association is interested in acquiring those two pieces of land, and the city, through the agencies and staff that I mentioned, is willing to dispose of the properties in that way, subject to terms of a contract with covenants that would limit how the land could be used in the future. A copy of the map showing the area was attached in your packet, as was the contract and the proposed quitclaim deed with covenant. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about any aspect of the proposed transaction.
Any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this abandonment and sale of excess purchased property?
Is this the majority of the property that was left over?
There's actually land further to the east that would still be part of that roadway expansion, and the Northwoods Homeowners Association did approach us some time ago to say we were interested in it. They want to enhance their entrance, and that is what is driving their request.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion that we abandon and then sale this excess property?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider any beer permit applications. Ms. Wright.
Mayor, we have several tonight. We have two pharmacies, one at 1131 Murphy Boulevard, one at 3389 Memorial Boulevard. We have a convenience store at 2002 East Main Street, a restaurant at 1962 South Church Street, and a special event at 110 West College Street. All of these have met our requirements.
All right. Council members, you've heard that all of these beer applications meet our requirements. Is there a motion that we accept?
Will they be approved?
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider the appointment to our gas board of Mr. Michael Dewis of AC Plus. Is there a motion to approve that nomination?
I move we approve the recommendations of the mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider the appointment to our gas board of Mr. Michael Dewis of AC Plus. Is there a motion to approve that nomination?
I move we approve the recommendations of the mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider any other business from staff or the council to come before the council. Ms. McGannon.[1646.19]
that will arise between now and the next council meeting for the acquisition of land as part of the Joby Jackson Project. We will be acquiring a home and property in its entirety as part of the transaction because it is subject to T dot relocation. We will also be paying closing costs on their new property. We don't have an amount certain or the payee for that. That's a little atypical, so that's why we were asking you for permission tonight to make those two payments, and the payments of the allowances mentioned in my cover letter when we have those more definite.
All right.
Is there additional for his relocation or utilities? Is that also?
Yeah, that, yes, that's mentioned in the letter, the allowances that were in the letter. Right. We know what the amount is, the maximum amount of the utility allowances will be in the moving, but we don't have a figure yet for the closing costs. But we, of course, would not have staff write a check until we had certainty, but we needed to get approval to write that check between now and then.
My understanding, Ms. McGannon, this is helping the family that's selling to buy a new house on the same day so there won't be an overlap of residences, and it's a convenience to help smooth out the process.
It's to help the people who had to move because of a road project to be able to try and do it on the same day, so there wouldn't be a gap, and they have a contingency on the property they are seeking to buy. So we want to facilitate and accommodate that by doing everything we can to make sure they meet that deadline.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, one other question is, what do we typically do when we purchase a house? Do we typically auction it, or what do we do with the house once we get it? What happens?
I don't know that you could say there's something that's typical. We have, we have auctioned and allowed people to move. Some we have just destroyed. I don't know what is envisioned for this particular location, but certainly if we can make economic benefit by relocating it, we will.
All right. You have this recommendation of the city attorney. Are there any other questions?
I move we approve the recommendation, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Any other business? Seeing none, you are adjourned.